Today we talk the county conditions by a meaning order.
Heavenly God, we thank you, Lord, for another day to inspire us and bless us, Lord, to come out to do business, Lord, that we pray we get everything done in a way that we pleased with county and help our people, Lord. We ask you, Lord, to lead, guide, direct us, and, Lord, we not have hard feelings and things when we trying to do the best we can. We got so many people that's hurting, Lord, in the hospital, nursing homes and things, and we got problems here with our hospitals and things. Lord, we know this, that you're a great partner, you've done a lot of things, and, Lord, we need some help from you, and so we ask you, Lord, to come in one day and show us, Lord, if we're making mistakes and love one another, work together one another, so we can get things accomplished. Thank you, Lord, for all that you've done for us, and we ask you now, send jobs and things in this county, Lord, we can help our people. We ask all these things, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray, and amen.
Attention, salute, prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from January 17, 2017. Voting on approval of the minutes, voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the nodaries and surety bonds. Nodary Republic have Charles B. Sexton, Tara Cooper, Roger Way Ballin, Trent O'Bird, Deborah A. Reagan, and next we have the surety, personal surety is Dora L. Cotton, Burchett's Bonding Company, Mutual, Lonnie W.R.'s, Reli Insurance Company, Sharon Trammell, Victoria Carson, and Michael Potter. Okay, voting on approval of the surety bonds and nodaries, nodaries. Voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the financial reports, they're in your book list, monthly, the trustee and the county clerk. If you had a chance to look at them, will entertain a motion, remember those. Okay, voting on voice vote, approve the minutes, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have school matters. Mr. Hall, are you back there anywhere? Okay, do we have anybody from Old Natah Special School District? No? Okay. Next, we have the sheriff's report. Anyone here from the sheriff's office? No. Next, we have road matters. Mr. Sexton? No. Okay. Moving on to the general public, one of the first things on the...
Can we do the checks?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do. First thing on is we're presenting the fire department with their checks from the county tonight.
First one we have is Old Natah Department. Ask the... Ask the fire department? And we got staff stop down? E-63? Me county? Second station?
Thank you all for our following.
I think, Mary, you've got one for the rescue squad, right?
I said rescue squad.
One thing we didn't do last year is we increased the money to our bond to fire departments, which we don't need. At that time, we did not increase anything to the rescue squad. We had talked about doing it in certain kind of quarters, and I think that led to budget committee, but the rescue squad been a big sample service this year. When we started working with state property, and I like this, fortunately, but then the budget committee, we're gonna be trying to dig out some money from funding. If we can't do anything else, I'd like to see the sample service pitch a little bit back to the rescue squad.
I don't think we did anything to pitch.
Hope you stay and travel again. But I think if we open that to them. We should be there. Well, we don't have four wheel drive, so we're always our force. We need to recognize it.
Okay, do we have anybody from the general public that would like to speak? Okay, state your name.
Got a question.
Okay.
Okay, you all legalized where you can ride four wheels on the county road. Okay, I was talking to a state trooper, I was sitting on the side of the road with my side by side, I just pulled up on the side of the road, I wasn't on my ride, but anyway, he could stop me. He informed me that I could not ride my side by side on any county road or any road. The only place I could drive that side by side was in the woods. I put a minimum speed license plate on it. I paid $30 for the county road tax. And my question is, who's right and who's wrong? If you people voted to make it legal to ride on the county road, and the state trooper says you can't, now who's right?
Well, actually, the state legislature has authorized the use of an ATV on a county road. When were you pulled over?
I was sitting by the side of the road.
When were you pulled over?
Oh, it been, well, a couple of weeks ago, maybe.
Okay, did they sash you? Did they...
No, he didn't, no, he was nice now. He was nice. But hey, he just informed me that I couldn't ride that nowhere in the woods, but in the woods.
The state legislature has authorized the use of ATVs as long as they meet minimum requirements, side by side meeting certain requirements. Like, I know what you're saying.
Well, that my side by side, you tell me that.
Yeah.
Okay. I've got windshield on it, a wiper, windshield wiper on it, all turn signals, all reflectors and everything. Hey, but the law, the way the state, the state law reads, that vehicle I've got, I can ride it legal on any state highway where the speed limit is 40 miles per hour or less.
Not on a state highway. No, that is not what the law says.
Well, that thing that I filled out to get the license plate, that's the way it reads.
That you cannot be on a state highway. Now, did you have a horn on your ATV?
A what?
That's another requirement.
Well, I just go with what the state, that thing the state said.
That's another requirement that's required by the state law. But what I'll say is, in county clerk, in fact, we have on this, the state is not...
I'm not arguing, I'm just trying to get straight out.
We're trying, let me tell...
In other words, that's him.
...answers to, because the state will not, even though this law went into effect on January 1, the state is behind what the law says. They have not, they've not carried their water on providing information to the county on how we enforce this, how we register this.
Well, yeah, okay. Well, do you think the state...
We've been checking on. Were you actually ticketed for this?
Would it be fair to say, do you all notify the state about the legality of it, that the court will pay any tickets that anybody gets since you made it legal, they read in the paper, they go out there on the county road to get it?
Did you get a ticket?
No, I didn't get one. He just told me I couldn't ride it.
Well, we're not wanting to, you know, if you got a ticket, that would be another issue, but they're, they are way behind time on advising the county governments on how they enforce this law.
Well, only thing I can say, neighbor, is this. The people of Scott County, I'm talking about everybody, the people of Scott County is treated different by the state than the rest of the state is. Go around, hey, over to Lake City, they ride their four wheel and step away, in the woods and around. Why is Scott County being treated so much different? That's just like the brimstone in them hat, they're a shindig, if you would. State troopers come in here and swarm to everybody. Roll Blue has one, no state troopers, Winrock has it, they're not bothering. I just wonder why Scott County being treated so much different than everybody else? Why?
You are ticketed.
Huh?
You were not ticketed.
Well, he told me I couldn't ride. He, you all say it's legal, he says it's not.
Well, state law says that it is legal to ride on ATV on county roads as long as you meet certain minimum requirements on your ATV.
Lord have mercy. So right now, that money I spent for the wheel tax and for that minimum speed license plate is just a waste of money.
No, sir, it sounds like that you're one of very few complying with this. It sounds like you're one of very few that is very complying with this in law like citizens.
What you fellows need to do then is put in the paper what is required to be legal to ride an ATV or a side by side. People don't know.
Now, what we need to do is, we need to contact back with the state and some of the other officials and clarify this once.
Well, yeah, it needs to be clarified.
We can do that.
Let's see, what way is now? You all saying it's legal, and the state says it's not.
Well, it's not anything this government body has done. It's what the state legislature has done. They have passed a law to authorize the use of ATVs on county roads, however, they have not thought through the enforcement of that yet.
So the way it stands, the way it stands now, anybody's not legal to ride. That's about what it is.
It's the state law, as long as you meet those requirements on the ATV, then you are authorized to ride on a county road. Yes, you are.
Well, my...
It may...
I can't control who owes you owes.
All I can say is, my side by side, it's got everything like that automobile's got. Plus, I bought it, I bought insurance on it. And I can figure out what else anybody needs.
You was pulled over by one trooper. If you'd been pulled over two or three, there could be a misunderstanding, miscommunication between one person.
If he had taken you to court, and you had been able to prove to the court that you had met those, all those requirements under the state law, the court would have dismissed your request.
All I can say is, before the county voted it to legalize it, they ought to hold the state where one has knows what the other to do.
This is something the state did on its own, not even thinking of the county.
My food. We did go to the state there, Icefield. Well, again, everybody knows me, so I care of representing the people of this county. I get calls every day. They don't want the old jail sold, they don't want it leased. They want you people, the county government, to do something with it, clean it up, ask, get your prisoners out there, go and get some donations, and clean it up, and you can, I've been told, you can apply for a grant on the roof, and you don't have to pay it back. So you people can check that out. Now, also, there's a lot of talk out there about straightforward community. It's better to get $100 a month than zero, and you can get your utilities paid. I was told the rent was raised, and the guy moved out. There's a lot of problems you guys have in this county. And I can understand how the public is talking when I go out. And I get calls at home, sometimes 12 o'clock at night. You can call the telephone company, find that out. So I am here to represent the people, and they don't want the old jail sold. They don't want it leased. It's over 100 years old, it's made out of sand rock. So you people can do something with it. Only a few dollars. You need, another issue they talk about, you need mics in here for, so they can hear you talk.
Got a guy coming into work session next week, or two weeks from now.
That's good. You all need, you all have a lot of stuff you need to do instead of trying to sell something the public don't want sold.
All right, Steve, listen, we talked about this before.
I know, you said you put a hold on it, you get...
I did. There's nothing been done. Nothing has actually been done at all. As far as, let me clarify something. It's not been a very good day anyway, so let me just get started. As far as the community center stuff over there, the person moved out, they was paying $4,800 a year in rent. The utilities and everything was costing the county taxpayers $8,600 a year.
Was they not paid, they didn't pay the utilities?
No, they didn't.
Okay, okay.
So here's one I want to ask you, and as far as the jail goes, it can cost as much as $100,000 to $500,000 to restore the jail. I know, I've done my numbers, and I know what I've been doing. And I wish that you would research a little bit more before you come in here and spoke like this, because you don't know what you're talking about. And I respect you, but when you come in here and you start slamming me or this board, when you don't have...
I'm not slamming you or this board. I'm telling you what the people are saying.
Well, here's the thing. I would much rather see somebody put $500,000 in that old jail, retain the history of that old jail to the purpose they're gonna do it, and put tax dollars back into the county. And that way it's reserved. It's gonna fall down the way it is right now.
It doesn't cost the county one dime. It sits over there. It does not cost the county one dime. Now, you can say whatever, you have an umbrella...
It don't cost the county one dime. What's happening to it right now is deteriorating.
You've let it go. You should hip it up. The people before you, the commissions before you, they've let it go.
Please just, please just come in, when you come in, have the facts.
I have more than five minutes now. You guys can say whatever you want to me. You can put me in jail if you like, I'm not here to talk. So...
Yeah, you are.
Yeah, I am, I'm going to talk. I'm gonna be another two or three, five minutes, I don't care what you say.
I was respectful of you by giving you that time that you asked for, just asking you to do that.
Now, you can check all this out, like grant for the roof. There's a lot of stuff you can do by looking into it. And the prisoners will be glad to go out there and help clean it up, and we can get some donations coming in, we'll pass them on to the mayor, he can handle it, and we can get something done to that old jail. If you had 100 people lined up here, I'm gonna say this before I go, if you had 100 people lined up, and you asked that 100 people, do you want the old jail sold? Sold? 75 of those 100 people will say no.
Nobody's talking about selling this jail.
Okay, they'll say, don't lease it or sell it. That's 75 out of 100. Now, when I went to school, the majority usually, the majority had it. But the way it is today...
You told me you give one month to come up with $100,000.
No, I didn't say anything about no money. I said we'll do what we can.
I'm glad.
Yeah. You said you put a hold on it, so we could get some donations coming. I didn't get no hold, and I didn't, I wasn't asked to start getting the donations. But now, I believe I can do it, and I'll pass them on to the mayor. We can get some money coming in and get the prisoners over there to clean it up. The people in the county don't want it sold, it's over 100 years old.
You might want to be at the next community meeting, because we're gonna take some action at that point, and we're not taking no action tonight. See you at the next meeting.
No wonder they're talking about draining the swamp. I'm honest, some of the commissions, they're not talking, they're not talking about some of them, just, some of the commissions they're talking about, some of them they're not. So I want to make that claim.
If we put a thing on this that you can come up with for this, you got five minutes to say your case for...
I've been to other...
I can't say it, I'm not listening to this stuff.
I think, I think we understand your point.
I understand, I believe. But this guy cannot rule this commission meeting. It's the mayor's job. So anyway, just remember what I said, the people don't want the old jail sold. They want some petitions started. I may do that.
Okay, is there anyone else from the general public?
Thanks, Bronstein, back there from Scott County Airport and Boarding. In February of last year, y'all approved us doing a hang. We have a TAD project, a Tennessee Aeronautics project, we have a number. Tennessee Aeronautics had problems with the consultants we had, and we have changed consultants, which we did, we did several months ago. We have a, I need to know, John, if the TAD project we have, which was assigned to us by the state, is still valid, or does the county have to reapprove the existing TAD project?
Project has been approved. We need to make sure that we have approved, I guess, the contractor of this project. What I'd like to do, we may have done this already, and Ron brought this up tonight, but I need to make sure, because there's been several issues with regard to contractors that have been previously approved that have been, that have resulted in problems with the project. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and approve the, in the event that it's needed, so as not to delay anything with regard to the airport airport project, is to go ahead and approve, is this the SEAL code?
No, the SEAL code's approved and already did, and it's been left. It will be done probably in April, depending on what the weather. This one we approved at the same time back in February, but the state that still had a problem with the contract with the ECD, and so we transferred it over to PDC, who's a consulting firm, and the state approved it.
Just as a housekeeping matter, I'd like for the body to go ahead and approve, to proceed with PDC, which I think we've already entered into a contract, correct? And we've already terminated the contract, the prior contract, correct? So this is just, just to be on the safe side, if this body does approve the process, because it is technically, the original contract was signed by county government. So we're approving to proceed with PDC on the airport project, correct?
Correct.
And we're proceeding on this project?
Pardon?
Which project?
On the hangar project.
The hangar project.
We have a project.
And we have a project.
I'll make that one.
I'll say it, come on.
Voting on boys' vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Ron.
I'll bring it to the end. Thank you.
Okay, next we have the committee reports and resolutions. And first is Parks and Recreation, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the Parks and Recreation Committee was called to order on five oh three, Chairman to Chairman February sixth, two thousand seventeen, member president, Chief Chalmers, Sheila Budge, Rick Russ, June Jeffers, Chairman Martin, Ken Kidd, and Ashes and Reagan. Also president, Ginger Lynn, financial director, Kelly Lou, Mayor John May, County Attorney, Bill Sky, meeting. The meeting was, uh, the first, uh, thing that night was motion by Rick Russ, second by Ken Kidd, to request the finance committee to bid the four billion buildings where baseball field except for six, there is time, voting aye all present. Uh, number two, motion by June Jeffers, second by Sheila Budge, to adjourn the meeting, voting aye all present.
Motion to approve amendment.
Second. Voting on boys' vote to approve the amendments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, before you go on, I could, I had a call for a second.
Yes.
Uh, I, I was going to mention, uh, that, uh, we had discussed that night about trying to get some numbers together to, to set a goal that we're trying to raise for the memorial that we're putting together. And so, uh, I've worked on getting numbers, and of course, Rick's been really busy getting some numbers. I think we come up with a number that we can set as, as kind of a goal of what we like to raise to, uh, to put this together. And that number would be twenty-two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. And that's, that's kind of the, putting everything together, the number that it costs, the folks that we got together, of course, there's a lot of people, you know, put time, uh, their own equipment and stuff like that, to keep that number as low. Of course, the monument itself is one of the, is in that number. I want to say this coming to Scott High School, we asked her if she could put something together for us, a visual that we could, uh, display, and, uh, she didn't have much time, she put something together, we gave an idea of what it's going to look like, or what we'd like for it to look like. And we have that here for tonight to look at. Uh, but, uh, I don't know if we need to make any actual officially accept that number, or just put that out there, I mean, do we either? Yes, 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 of course, yes, everything we'll, we'll put out the bid, this, this is just a number that we, we got together, and got quotes about the monument itself, the concrete and all that, just to give an idea so that the, the commission and the, and the public can kind of know what, what number we're trying to put together to raise, yes. When it comes to that point, yes, everything we put out the bid, so that number could be, could be less, it could be a little more, I mean, it depends. Uh, this is just basically a column monument places and, and concrete, and doing all that stuff and getting ideas, the way it would cost to put it together, that's all it was.
And, and we got a breakdown of, of the concrete, the flat hoes, the everything, one of the one, we want to put this out the bid, I don't know whether we have to bid all as a whole to one contract we do. But, uh, anyway, that's, that's how we had to do it, as we're supposed to get these prices together, and.
So we could present something and everybody can know, it's something we've been working on for long, it's kind of hard to kind of put together, get all the numbers and stuff, there's different parts, but, uh, that's the number we, uh, total everything up, and the best estimate we'd have would be that, that twenty-two nine forty. So, uh, that's where we're at. And, uh, the, uh, the Valentine's was a, was a great, uh, the Valentine's Day was a great event, I mean, I don't think, Susan Reagan again, and she was all glad, uh, putting it together for Rick, uh, on time, putting everything up, uh, together. Uh, and the meeting, I saw many commissioners was there to make it, or, I know some of the meeting, meeting donated, wasn't able to make it, uh, also, but it was, it was a great event, and, uh, I don't know if I've worked that, that much since, I've been up quite a while, we were pretty busy that night. Uh, so, and it, but it went over really well, I was able to break in, get it done, I'm not that responsible, I'm not the dream thing yet, but, but we're, we're working on it, we're getting, and, uh, I think we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get there before we know it.
Yeah, Brian, that's a. Pardon, what we actually drove during this event was roughly sixty-six hundred and sixty dollars. And that's kind of with the small contribution we already had in hand to Mr. Burge and the finance department. Uh, after our expenses and everything, we actually made, we was hoping to make around three thousand thirty-five hundred dollars on this event. Great event. You wouldn't argue about it, but then actually we got one going on, so straight event, a lot of people talking about it. But after, after the made, it looks like we are making well over forty-five hundred dollars, uh, that, that we made on this project. So, we got several more projects left to go, and we're going to make this go. We have Mr. Yancey back there with us tonight, and everything that we're doing, I've been working, I've been working through him, and Lord, and the rest of the family. And I, I think, I think y'all believe it's going to happen now, don't you? And, uh, and we'll continue to work with them on what we do and how we do it. And our goal right now is to, uh, the one thing we want everybody to understand is, we, it's the John John Yancey Memorial Park, this monument here is, is a fallen hero memorial. Uh, and initially starting out this thing will be, we have seven police officers in this county that can kill online duty, all actually be on it. And, but, uh, John John is primarily reasons this thing was established to move it, and we're going to continue to work with family and keep it going.
I've been there, they stepped away. Let's see, commissioners, how many questions, Mr. Chairman, that time, I thought I wanted to bring it up.
Uh, let's do it. I'm just going to go out under one proposal, people come in and bid on for the whole thing, that's what we're going to have to do, and.
Okay, okay.
But the thing that we, the thing we willing to add is, uh, that a lot of this, we have to get this broke down into one bid, but a lot of this will become, there are a lot of people, a lot more donations is coming out there, even including labor. I, I have contacted several of our people within, that's, which actually showed up in the meetings of the night, uh, our, uh, non-licensed contractors, that have all stepped in and said, we want to be a part of this, we want to help. So, so all of them is going to be kind of putting into this thing with their equipment, their time, and material.
Yeah, I was just saying, I think you have to get out in front of the thing and get the bids in here, so you have a fixed number.
Well, and, and we, we, we work.
You can stop, you know, you, you can stop the donation part.
Well, here's the thing.
Because it's, it's kind of difficult, you have, you have a lot more money than you need.
Well, we're, here's the thing, we're not going to have a lot more money than.
I know, what are you doing?
There is nothing, if whatever comes into this project goes with this project. As you see right now, on this project, there's, this project intends to have a rock wall all the way around this one. And, and that would be based on if, if we had any extra money, and we might, we probably will, this project, we look for an eternal flame that's going to be in this project. But with this price, we, we're not there. But with all the donations, we'll be able to do solar lighting, we'll be able to do a lot of different things. But it doesn't matter whether we raised the twenty-two thousand, or we raised, uh, or it comes in more, which we're going to stop our bids, but whatever comes in, will go to this month, we can't spend it nowhere else. But we're not trying to raise more money than we need, but there's, there's a lot of little extra stuff in there that we'd like to see to build this thing up, and if the donations come, then, then it's all going right there.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, we have emergency services committee, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I'm sorry, so.
I'm going to say this and go home and get the bids, because I'm about seventy now. I appreciate what this county commissioners has done. And it's just like a great big drum old plane, it's going up. When it levels off, we're all going to be real happy. And, uh, if anybody has any thoughts against this, that they don't think it's ought to be right, or this and that, I'd like to know who it is, their name, and everything. It might be one person, it might be two. But, uh, God has blessed you, and I'm glad, I'm glad I'm saved, and I can look at all of you, and you can look at me and say, yous love me, we're just trying to do something to pass through this world, so I can be with my boy one of these days and leave a memory for the county. God bless you, and thank you.
Chairman Phillips?
Yes, sir. We call emergency services committee, order, meeting call at, at six fifteen, DM Hurstville Chair, member President Hurstville, Rick Burke, Sam Wild, Patty Brown, Kim Chadwell, David Blue Day, and Lord, Robert Brun. I want most of the David Blue Day, second by Rick Burke, and Cougar Ridge Private Drive for nine-one-one address. Name, uh, name Curry, name Cougar Ridge Private Drive for nine-one-one, voting aye all present. Number two, most of Kenny Chadwell, second by Rick Burke, adjourn the meeting, voting aye all present. I make most of the votes in there, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All place aye, opposed?
Can we read the resolution? Can we read?
Yeah.
Our request to be made by landowners to name a road in the third district, whereas the road would be named for nine-one-one purposes only, do not bring the road into the county road system, whereas the name proposed is Cougar Ridge Private Drive, which is accessed from the West Hill Road. Now therefore be resolved, Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby approves the name of the service road as Cougar Ridge Private Drive for nine-one-one purpose. That's a motion to approve.
Second. All place aye? One last?
Okay. Moving on to the buildings and grounds committee.
Building grounds committee called to order six thirty, Rick Russ Chair, member President Sam Wild, Rick Russ, Eric Newport, Robin Brun, Rick Burke, Robin Newman, Sheila Budge. No members asked. Motion by Eric Newport, second by Robin Newman. The organization talks to relocate the building office space at Scott County Office Building, twenty-eight forty-five Baker Highway, Hunter County City, voting aye all present. Motion by Eric Newport to adjourn the meeting, voting aye all present.
Motion to approve.
Motion to.
Second. Voting on boys' vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas the state judges are in native offices at Scott County Justice and have previously utilized four to one special advocates or CASA. And whereas this office located across the hallway from the present office of the General Session Judge was initially intended as an office for the state judges in the design of the justice center. Whereas CASA has requested to use the former driver's license annexed at Scott County Clerk's office, located in Scott County Office Building in its new location. And whereas Scott County Board of County Commissioners is charged with signing office space in the county building's unstable office, whereas the building grounds committee has recommended CASA's request to the full commission. Now therefore be resolved, the CASA be authorized to relocate this office to the former driver's license annexed at Scott County Clerk's office, located in Scott County Office Building. Now, I want a motion.
John say that next one.
Voting on boys' vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to the community, community development committee.
The community development committee was called to order at six thirty-four PM by Robin Newman, Chief Chalmers, Mayor President, Robin Newman, Mike Flamen, Repress, June Jeffers, Eric Newport, Trent Cross, Sheila Budge. Number one was a motion by Repress, second by June Jeffers, to approve the Paint Rock Volunteer Fire Department's request for a roadblock on February twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, at the intersection of Paint Rock Road and Anna Del Road. Voting aye all present. Number two, motion by Repress, second by June Jeffers, to appoint Sherry Schaefer, Susie Armstrong, and Eric Newport to the Scott County Agriculture Committee for a two-year term, replacing Cheryl Calhoun, Shonda Crabtree, and Willie Boett. Voting aye all present. Motion by Eric Newport, second by Repress, to adjourn, voting aye all present.
Voting on boys' vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, there is two resolutions, actually. The first one is whereas there has been a request from the Paint Rock Volunteer Fire Department to hold a roadblock within their service area, and whereas this organization has requested the roadblock for the following location and time, intersection of Paint Rock Road and Anna Del Road, February twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, from nine AM to one PM. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scott County Board of County Commissioners authorize this roadblock location approved this twenty-first day of February.
We're saying a motion.
Motion. Mayor, he was here, and I told, he had to leave, but I told him they had to have that paper signed and back to me where everybody signs the paper that they know, you know, about the roadblock, and he had to have it to me by Friday, or they didn't have the road back, so I just hear that.
So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
And the second resolution is whereas the Scott County Agriculture Committee needs to be updated, and whereas the UT TSU Extension Office of Scott County has recommended that Sherry Schaefer, Susie Armstrong, and Eric Newport be appointed to replace Cheryl Calhoun, Shonda Crabtree, and Willie Boett. Now therefore be it resolved, Scott County Commission hereby approves these appointments and accordingly removes those individuals being replaced as recommended by the UT TSU Extension Office of Scott County. And be it further resolved that the appointments be for two-year terms and be effective immediately.
Voting.
Voting on boys' vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next we have the budget committee. Chairman Cross.
Yeah. Uh, budget committee is February sixth, member President Trent Cross, Patty Brown, and Rick Russ, Robin Brun, members asked by Mike Flamen. Being called to order at six fifty PM by Trent Cross Chair, most of Rick Russ, second by Robin, Mr. Brun. Approve amendment number one, the highway department approve amendment number one for the general capital projects. Amendment number two, ambulance service, amendment number two, solid waste, amendment number two, federal funds, and amendment number three is general purpose orders, voting aye all present. Motion by Robin Brun, second by Patty Brown, to approve the his will year two thousand seventeen eighteen calendar budget, voting aye all present. Motion by Rick Russ, second by Patty Brown, to adjourn the meeting, voting aye all present.
And we're having a motion, motion to approve amendment.
I'll second that.
Thank you, George. If you have any questions about the amendment, you can, very close, Ginger. Budget calendar been here, uh, so I was lucky that a lot of commissioners came last year, uh, whoever hasn't come in with those.
Is this a revival? Oh, this is pretty mad, they voted on, uh, some of the amendments. I'm sorry. Grant, you have a favor? So, voting to approve amendments, uh, entertain a motion to approve. Did you vote on your man? Voting on boys' vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Sorry, man.
So now I need a motion to approve the amendments presented.
Make motion. Start it.
Voting on boys' vote? To approve the amendments? All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
We have the budget calendar here. Present, I guess, so revise one to approve that also. Entertained motion to approve the seventeen eighteen budget calendar.
I'll make that motion.
Voting on boys' vote? All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I believe that's March the twenty fourth.
Yes.
If anybody, if any commissioners want to join the budget committee, it'll be March the twenty fourth. That'll be when the hearing's on. Forty minutes.
Somebody else before the way they move it, quit your mouth.
Okay, moving on to intergovernmental committee. That's also Chairman Cross.
Intergovernmental committee. Anywhere the states, two thousand seventeen, members present: Trent Cross, Blue Day, June Jeffers, Kenny Chadwell, Ernst Phillips, Patty Brown. Members asked, Mike Slaven. Meeting was called to order at six fifty six P M. by Trent Cross Chair. Request Mitch Loomis to attend the county commission meeting on February the twenty first, two thousand seventeen, to discuss the HUD. Number two, motion by Blue Day, second by Patty Brown, to adjourn the meeting, voting aye all present.
Motion approved, ma'am.
I'll say.
He here for that, I guess.
What did Mitch?
He called him today and made some changes to this last week. In fact, they've come down to what it can be used for. And he would not have any information, but he is coming to the work session and going to explain what it can be used for.
We've not missed anything. But he'll be here. You're fine. You're fine. Be here at the March court session.
Motion to second on the minutes.
Voting to approve the amendments? Voting on boys' vote? All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to the finance committee.
Finance committee, February thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. Members present: Mike Slaven, Ernst Phillips, Kenny Chadwell, June Jeffers, Dale Perdido, Bill Hall. Members asked, Dick Saxon. Also present: Ginger Reynolds, Finance Director. Meeting was called to order at five P M. by Mike Slaven Chair. Motion by June Jeffers, second by Kenny Chadwell, to approve the bill. Voting aye all present. Motion by Bill Hall, second by Dale Perdido, to forward the bill of U S B A processed commercial equipment products to the Scott County Board of Education. Voting aye all present. Motion by Ernst Phillips, second by Kenny Chadwell, to approve the five-year capital outlay note and the report on debt obligation to the offices of the state local finance controller of the treasury group of the state of Tennessee for Scott County Highway Department. Voting aye all present. Motion by June Jeffers, second by Bill Hall, to adjourn the meeting, voting aye all present.
Okay, voting on boys' vote? To approve the amendments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
The other one is the resolution concerning the five hundred thousand of the road department borrowed capital outlay notes. I think we need to approve that. That's the interest rate obligation.
And if they step to the spec, they're going to...
And I said the county, but it's actually the road department. It would probably get it in the book. Then the motion.
Need a motion to approve it?
Yes.
My motion for the five hundred thousand.
This five hundred thousand, now, here, what road is it going to take? That is big expression.
It's going to county line. That's all that was set to accept the funds. And then maybe county line, he said county line.
My understanding is one note paid off or two?
Yeah, well, he's, but in a year, he'll pay three notes paid off.
Okay.
And I, I was, I've heard him discuss that. Now, what he would like to do, you know, this is what he would like to do, is to work some every digit with that money. I mean, that's his plan. I mean, that's what he said. They've said they would like to just work and every digit with that money.
Okay.
It should be spread evenly. Probably seven digits.
I don't know how he's put it that, I just know he said he could.
Voting on road, all votes?
Brown. Huh? Brown.
Aye.
Chadwell.
Aye.
Jeffers. Aye. Miles.
Aye.
Blue. Newman.
Aye.
Newport.
Aye.
Glass. Slaven.
Aye.
Motion carried. Are there any other matters that need to come before the bill tonight? Mary Ann's coming up to the code.
Um, the grant that we got, the home grant, since we didn't vote in the codes, the lady from the community developer partners checked with Winfield, Onata, and Huntsville. And they said that the money that we got could be used for those cities because they do have the codes, if that is okay with this commission.
With three cities? But the thing that is, we spend all the money for three cities. And I don't want to lose this money to anybody. And we still have state legislature right now to see if these things change?
I wouldn't count on anything changing. I haven't seen any legislation that's been proposed.
I'm all for it, given somebody's. I just, I just want to make sure we don't just go out and people within the county.
But if they do, if that does happen, Chris, the one that does the thing, he said that as quick as we got this one done, he would file another one where we could help people to see if we could get another one, you know?
I would rather not issue any of that in the present town. I'm not sure what's going to happen to this next state actually.
They might follow this.
Yeah, they just seem to get it.
Yeah, they, there's still some possibilities.
I do know I have spoken, excuse me, with Mayor Jeffers. And, and he did ask to that if we, if we had applicants who filed that were within the city limit, that, you know, they still had space available to them to help people, some means they can't.
Yeah, but of course, ours, we couldn't, because of cities. So none of ours was in. None of ours was in city limits.
Right, but he meant if anybody did file that was, that we couldn't accept and to pass those names on to them, that they would be blamed.
If anybody did, we told them that they'd need to go.
How many applications do we have here, Mary Ann?
Well, all the ones we had is in the county. We had six.
There are nine, eight or nine, I think.
Code, yeah.
And now they weren't in the city limits, of course. They were in the county.
So.
This here is just saying that to keep from losing the grant, we could use the money on, you know, help with Huntsville. But he wants to wait.
I'm all for giving whatever we need to not to lose it. I really am. I just don't want to do the all.
Three years?
Yeah.
But you'd, you'd probably need to do it before you'd have about two years.
We don't want to wait real long.
Right.
Are we going to pass, or are we doing what you guys want?
I mean, I just think if, if we choose as a court to opt out, then we need to let somebody have that money.
I agree, hundred percent.
I mean, it would be bad. Winfield, Onata, Huntsville, whoever. If we're going to opt out, we need to let somebody spend that money. We don't need to let.
One hundred percent.
But still help the county.
I still want to see what happens within the state legislature before we make a decision. And it's still out there.
Mary Ann, do you know what the deadline is?
She really wanted us to do it tonight so she could... There's so much paperwork that comes before with them. They're writing in the paper, they have to, so.
Don't you give us another work session and court and maybe...
Do we want to do that?
Maybe call.
I'm not voting, I just, I just feel just the way I feel.
But I'm not sure that we can have information up to here, do you?
Yes, they have to be the final.
Yeah.
There's a good chance, you know, I'm trying to speak here with Mr. Baby as well, that, that nothing will be changed, correct? Or?
I really thought there might be something that was introduced before now. So I, I'm not saying that there won't be, but the fact that there hasn't been anything filed to change this law leads me to think that there may not be anything changed with this law this year.
What do you have, how long's been the nine? How long?
Uh, three years.
The people that, the people that are going to, let's say we give it to Huntsville.
It'll still go through us.
But my question though is, what are the people that are going to be doing the work if they have to be licensed contract?
Whatever it is, because they are code. They, they have all three opted in due.
But they have their own, which I know, we talked about this before. They have their own person that is licensed. And that's why I don't understand it.
Yes.
They have their own person that is licensed to check out all that stuff anyway, that they hire. But, I mean, this is just.
Who'd that?
I'm talking.
Say, the community development partners. And they get, they get awarded, you know, to their planners, actually. And then they go through all the process with the contractors. And the contractors do have to be licensed. But then they have somebody like Rex or, that's who, I don't know if he still works for them, but he did. And he goes after the contractors and to make sure that they do what they're supposed to do, even though they are licensed. So it's sort of a... They have almost it's double checked, almost, I guess you'd say. Or that's where it is.
I guess my question, John, is that if, if we decided as a county to have our own codes, then the people that work here and build homes, they would all have that license. But it wouldn't do us any good to have our own codes. You know, and still.
The way I say it, this is an opportunity to direct those funds to the municipalities that have opted in or are part of building codes.
And in our situation, most of the time, we never had anyone local doing any of our home grants anyway. I don't know about anyone else, but most of the time, they were out of county anyway, the ones that did our home grants.
I just hate for it to see it. And that's why, if nothing's going to change, and I know the word if is a big word, when it could be used to help these municipalities, I mean, I...
What's the total amount of money?
We got... We divided with Huntsville Rock. Yeah, we divided with Huntsville, they dropped the...
You've got three hundred thousand.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to... I don't know how everybody's feeling, but we just work out better if we just got it in work session, maybe, maybe this movement, and then went through that process and let everybody have time to ask questions and find information. Wait one more month.
Maybe we can call and get a straight answer where they're going to actually...
If they're not going to follow.
Put it in the legislature.
Because if they've already got plans, something working right now, then it's, you know, it's, might as well go ahead and continue to say it and start using what it can.
But according to, according to Robyn, an unlicensed contractor's not going to get to work either.
No, you're right. It's not, that's, that's not even the thing.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, why don't, I don't know why we can opt in. So I'm not going to get to work. So I'm not going to get any of that.
But then they still have to go, if they build anything here, if you opt in, they still have to get all their credentials. All the contractors here. Not if you opt in. That's, that's the thing with the contractors.
With or without the grant, I'd say.
Yes, they still have to, if you opt in, then they have to do that.
This grant, county acquired three hundred thousand. Did the city of Huntsville not also require, how much was that?
It divided.
Yeah, we actually split it, I believe. Okay. Okay, so are we holding up Huntsville for spending their part?
No.
Then, then why is Huntsville even in the conversation? I don't understand.
Because they may have some people that can use it.
But they're, they've already got their.
And, yeah.
They already used what they got.
Yes.
But their money would go up.
Well, there could be other people that would need it and could use this money.
It's just they apply for the county instead of the city of Huntsville.
Okay, are they in the city limits of Huntsville?
Well, that's what this would do in the city limits. The other people we had were in county.
The ones we had are not.
So it's like, type of, that you cross up.
People that actually got the grant or...
So it's, right. Instead of losing this grant totally, taking it back since you didn't opt in, they said, hey, maybe they would want to help the other people in the cities. You know, since, you know. So instead of taking it back.
I don't think that it would hurt anybody to wait another month because they are working on it. I know they're working on it. So you need to talk to Kelly again, you need to talk to Yeager again.
Okay, so we'll bring this up next month then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they are working on it.
Okay. I have one more thing. We have set the countywide cleanup for Saturday, April twenty sixth. April twenty sixth. And I'll be sending more stuff out and all that stuff, just to let you know. Thank you all.
Okay, are there any other announcements that you want to like to make?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Since the thing about the four wheel came up early on, Huntsville asked Pat, what's been the, the, the people been coming in and buying their tax for the four wheels? Just been pretty turnout?
As far as, I don't know, I can't give you exact number. Probably less than that, I.
You know, I don't remember what the guy's name was. Charles Jeffers, who gave a scene, but he mentioned something about real pay. Real pay.
We're not charging for that, so they did have the bill where you want.
And that's all, that's all state, nothing with the county. It's a state, it's all county, county, the fee.
You can get too old to...
Yeah, that's just handling it.
God, it's cutting through the road and we got to court here. Week from tomorrow.
Okay, any other announcements? Entertained motion to adjourn the meeting, motion to adjourn. Who's first? Zach, two? Mr. Slaven, would you be able to pray?
Baby, it's definitely Father, thank you for this. And we just, Lord, it is a privilege to serve the people of this county. We just ask for your leadership and guidance. We ask for a special blessing on commissioners and the family, Lord. Just, we just ask for, also for citizens here in this county that we can do what's right, that you have us to do. Now, as we lead, we just ask that you will lead and guide and direct us and bring us back safely. We ask these things of your name.